We ask everyone to silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated section of on the audience section of the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the board secretary Jane Kaiser or to me and we'll provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the board. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antiveros. The time is 6:01 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has posted has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Please stand for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. We will start this evening with recognitions. Dr. Dupree?
Thank you, Madam President. Our recognitions this evening will be a little different because we only have one recognition and the board can remain in their seat for the recognition this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to Veronica to get us started.
Okay, tonight we're here to recognize the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees for being named the 2017 HEB Excellence in Education Outstanding School Board during the 16th Annual HEB Excellence in Education Award Ceremony in May. Now, if you remember, we had Ms. Diaz here who received Principal of the Year and we recognized Richard Emrick for being Secondary Teacher of the Year. So this evening, we're going to recognize our board. As part of winning the award, the district received a $25,000 cash prize. So we want to thank HEB for that. And before we get started with some presentations, we wanted to show you a video that HEB put together for us for recognizing our board and their outstanding work.
Fort Bend ISD is in Fort Bend County, Texas. We're in a suburb of the Houston area. Our students come from all over the world. Nearly 100 languages are spoken in homes in Fort Bend ISD. And students also range in economic status, from the wealthiest of the wealthy. We have $12 million homes in our district, all the way down to homes with no running water. And we're recognized to be the most diverse public school district in the nation. Diversity is one of our greatest strengths. It's also one of our greatest challenges.
We have about 74,000 students. We have 11 high schools and 74 campuses total.
In Fort Bend ISD, this school board governs. They understand that they are responsible for the lives and futures of our 74,000-plus students. So what they are committed to doing is putting plans in place, systems in place, to make sure every single student is inspired and equipped to pursue whatever future beyond what they can imagine.
You know, it does all stem from the core beliefs and commitments. And that permeates throughout our district and it guides everything that we do, that and keeping the student at the center. So we've had a lot of successes. We have had a 108% increase in the Hispanic population in taking AP exams. We had a 97% increase in the African-American community taking AP exams. Those are huge gains, but I think we've expanded our programming in order to meet those changing demographics and make sure all students are served.
At school, I have the opportunity to join DECA, do business information management where I got to be certified as a Microsoft Specialist. So numerous opportunities to succeed, to learn new skills.
As diverse as we are, the board wants to know and they want us to demonstrate that we have made every effort possible to engage every single citizen. No language barriers, no economic barriers. We don't want anything to stand in the way of them engaging with their public school district on behalf of their children.
And so through the listening tours that we've created this last year, we are listening to what their concerns are, but we're also using that as an opportunity to inform the community about some of the things that we are doing and some of the changes that are being made.
So they've really made it where they have a cohesive team between the board and the superintendent, working together to make sure that they're getting information out to the community in different forums because we have such a diverse community.
Parents are very involved. So when you have parent involvement with the school board who is caring and who's willing to listen, that feels wonderful. You know, there's nothing more than being communicated to. Together, the mix is what makes a great school district.
And this award is significant because our school board members are volunteers and they give so much of their time to work with the district, to help the staff. They set the vision and leadership for the district and we're just blessed in Fort Bend ISD, so we wanted to thank you. Dr. Dupree, if you would, please come down. We've got some awards we'd like to pass out. And as he's making his way down, I wanted to change slides so you could see a couple of the billboards that are currently up in our community. If you haven't had a chance to drive by those, those are up and it's part of the Clear Channels Public Service Announcement Program. And so we've got those listed there for in case you haven't had a chance to see those. I'm going to go ahead and call you each by name. If you'll come down, get your award and then pose for a picture. We'd appreciate it and we'll get that posted. Let's start with Ms. Kristen Tassan. And we're going to take a picture. And we'll take a group picture, so if you want to stay down here, that'd be great. Mr. Jason Merdeen, do you please join us? Congratulations. Photo bombers. Congratulations, KP. Can we have Ms. Grail James, please? And Mr. Dave Rosenthal, if you'll please join us. You guys are worse than the kids. All right, we're going to take a group picture now. Congratulations and thank you all.
Dr. Dupree, that concludes recognition.
All right. As the board returns to their seats, I would add that just watching that video really brought back the same feeling and emotion that I experienced the night the award was given. Because having walked the last four years with this board and to see, really see the way they presented that video, and of course, being the voiceover on the video, it was cool to be able to express all of that from a very personal perspective. And the relationships that you have developed with one another and with me has been very powerful and I think that is really why you won. Kristin kind of alluded to that, but building from, just like you encourage us as leaders in our district, building relationships is the critical piece. And you all have done a phenomenal job of doing that with yourselves, with our senior team, throughout the organization and within our community, building the relationships that allow you to lead and govern in a very positive, well-respected way in this community. So thank you for what you've done and it's a thrill to get to honor you. I would point out, before we have any citizens who might be concerned about what we spent on billboards, that the billboards that are up were are part of Clear Channels Public Service Announcement Program. So we did not pay for the space. We simply paid to produce the rap that goes on it and it's being it's being up at their expense as a donation and contribution to the community. So once again, I wanted to make sure we get that disclosed very publicly. So again, congratulations. It's been a thrilling, it's been thrilling to be a part of this journey with you and we're very proud, I am very proud of each of you.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. And Mrs. Sofer, thank you very much for that awesome recognition. I would like to say on behalf of the board, thank you to Dr. Dupree and to Mrs. Porter and to Mrs. Sofer for the nomination, for preparing us, for writing the application, and just for submitting us. I think that you're right, that the relationships we've developed have been very powerful and have been very powerful in helping this district move forward. And that's one thing, but to actually take the step and to nominate this board is truly touching and I know that we appreciate it very much, each and every one of us. And thank you for giving us something to take home so that we can look at it or to our offices and remember, because it brought back the feelings for me too, to watch the video, so it's going to be great to have something to display. So thank you guys for getting that together for us.
Does anyone have anything else to say? Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we have to move on. So next up are audience items and I don't have anyone, is no one listed to speak this evening? Okay, then we'll move right along into our information items and we'll start with the literacy intervention program update. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, we're going to provide an update on our literacy intervention program that was implemented for the first time this year. I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Deanna Saavedra, to get started.
Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the board and Dr. Dupree. I'd like to introduce two members of my staff. Ms. Christy Durham, our Director of Literacy, and our Assistant Director, Elizabeth O'Toro. The two of them are going to be sharing some very important information associated with the successful launch of our literacy intervention program in year one. They'll also be sharing some important data that we've been able to glean from our first year of implementation. So Christy and Elizabeth.
Good evening, Board. Research consistently supports the principle that literacy continues to be the dominant factor in determining student success. Based on the quote on the screen, "A student who can't read on grade level by third grade is four times less likely to graduate by age 19 than a child who does read proficiently by that time," supports that statement. To help support our struggling readers, Fort Bend ISD implemented the literacy intervention program during the 16-17 school year. This structure supported students identified, struggling students identified in grades K through fifth grade, and it provided support for these students using the literacy intervention program and the Solucionis program if they were in bilingual classes. Every campus in Fort Bend ISD, every elementary campus, has one literacy intervention teacher to serve K through five monolingual students. And then all bilingual campuses also have an additional staffing unit for a bilingual literacy intervention teacher to support K through five struggling bilingual students. To launch this model for literacy intervention, we used Fountas and Pennell's Level Literacy Intervention. And then for our bilingual students, we used the Benchmark Solucionis Program, both of which provide high-quality intervention for our students who are struggling readers. At this time, Elizabeth will discuss the components of the program and the structure of the program and then we will move into the data pieces.
Thank you. Good evening. Here on the screen, you can see the process that our intervention structure follows. First, the RTI core teams on our elementary campuses, they look at universal screening data and beginning-of-the-year data to choose those students who would most benefit from the intervention. The groups are organized and the literacy intervention teacher meets with groups of three to five students. This process begins grades first through fifth. Kindergarten LLI does not begin before January. Since best practices dictate that kinder students have time to be immersed in literacy-rich environments and that they do receive formal instruction or literacy skills before intervention decisions would be made. Once the intervention has begun, there is ongoing progress monitoring. It's highly individualized so that the teacher is regularly determining if the intervention is the right fit for students. And that regular progress monitoring allows intervention decisions to be modified and adjusted as needed. This slide here shows that our literacy intervention teachers are able to provide three layers of support on their campuses. They do work with Tier Three students first and foremost in the pull-out intervention. They are also able to provide Tier Two support based on administrator need, actually based on student needs at their administrator's request. And there is also additional time built into their day where they are able to model best literacy practices, co-teach, or serve as coaches to enhance Tier One instruction and to build capacity in grade-level teachers. As with any new district initiative, professional learning is essential. And this year, in addition to providing initial training for full days with our Heinemann consultants so that all of our teachers could be trained as level literacy intervention teachers, we also had them attend monthly full-day professional development sessions where they could study more and learn more about what it means to refine best practices and to work with high-need students in the areas of literacy. Finally, we also provided individual campus support. This campus support model was differentiated and we made frequent visits based on a tiered model that was really determined based on student achievement data. So our needier campuses received more support. As was mentioned earlier, level literacy intervention has the added benefit of serving students in kinder through first grade, excuse me, through fifth grade. So this graph shows a breakdown of the total number of students served per grade level this year. We had approximately 1,900 students from fall to spring benefit from this intervention across all of our 47 elementary campuses. Progress monitoring was an essential component of this intervention. And we targeted two key areas. The first was student growth. As I mentioned earlier, literacy intervention teachers had to complete daily reading records on students or running records that assessed not only oral fluency but also comprehension. They were also keeping detailed observational records as well. Because there was such a keen focus on student growth, we were also able to monitor the rate of growth that students were engaging in and how far they were in achieving grade-level benchmark. So in the event that a student was falling behind or not making expected growth, conversations could be had at the campus level to determine whether or not this intervention was the best fit. We had a number of instances where the RTI core team came together and decided that, nope, we're going to use a one-on-one intervention for this student. We've given this a try and it isn't the best fit. So it allowed us to continually monitor and adjust to really target individual student needs. I'd like to take you through this graph with a first-grade example. As you can see, the grade level is on the far left. That first column shows the rate of growth, growth even if it was one to two reading levels. So we had 98% of our first graders who received LLI benefit from the intervention. Then we had 63% of first graders actually achieve a year's worth of growth. We have students who often come into the intervention two full academic years below grade level. And so that percentage there shows how many of our first graders benefited and achieved a year's worth of growth. And then we have 31% of our Tier Three first graders achieving benchmark, which is a reading level of 14. That means that they came into the intervention pretty intensely behind grade level and they were able to catch up with their grade-level peers at the end of the year.
Okay, as with the implementation of any program, we asked for feedback from our principals and our literacy intervention teachers. And so 90 to 100% of principals agree or strongly agree to the following. And so we asked about the impact of the literacy intervention program, the impact that it had on student achievement. We asked if it valued, if it added value to their campus. And then we asked for any adjustments that we may make to the program for the 17-18 school year to ensure continued implementation and the continued effectiveness of the program. Some of the challenges that the principals alluded to, where they need to develop intervention schedules that minimize Tier One impact, and they would like greater flexibility in the job role, but because the intervention is a K through five intervention, we do want to stick to that. We do not want to make it strictly a three to five intervention for STAR because of the impact of early literacy that it has on the early literacy. But we will be working closely with campus principals to ensure the intervention schedules of the literacy intervention teachers minimize the impact of Tier One instruction. We want to make sure that the literacy intervention teachers have the flexibility also of going in and coaching and modeling as needed. And so that also can be part of their schedule based on the campus need. Here are some principal quotes that we received that were included in the survey. They have appreciation for this position because it focuses both on coaching, PLC work, and student groups as well as needed intervention, K5. And it's been a valuable asset to their campus and it's hit a lot of their needs and helped students increase their reading, become better readers, and it helps students gain confidence in their reading as well. On the teacher feedback, this was for the literacy intervention teacher feedback. They 90 to 100% agreed when we surveyed them in April of 2017 that LLI training provided significantly to their professional growth and that it's a good intervention for students. Their concerns and challenges had to do with scheduling and time for planning. And so again, we'll be working closely with the literacy intervention teachers and we'll continue to do this because we did it all throughout the school year, help them adjust their schedules, help meet the needs of their campus while still providing the K through five intervention. Lessons learned? We will have a cohort of students that will continue the intervention in September. Because of the initial implementation this school year, we did not have a set group beginning in August when school started of who needed the intervention. We had to go through the RTI process. And we also had to train the level literacy intervention teachers. And so now we have a cohort of students that will continue right on through with the intervention that is needed for their success. We'll also continue to collaborate with the Department of School Leadership. And then this, we will allow for greater scheduling flexibility for administrators to help them learn how to use their literacy intervention teachers either for more small-group support systems or for coaching, modeling, planning, those kinds of things. And then given the universal screener, that will help with identifying students quicker and faster and getting them the intervention that is needed. And this, all of the data from the universal screener will be entered and be able to run accurately in one system. And so that will help with the implementation as well. Next steps? We have to remember that level literacy intervention is rooted in the principle that Tier One instruction is the educator's first line of defense. Through strong differentiated Tier One instruction, all leaders can gain access to the grade-level content, all learners. Intervention exists to catch students up in an efficient and targeted manner so that they can learn alongside of their peers and that is the goal of this program. The next steps? This year, we will really stress the importance of communication between the classroom teacher and the literacy intervention teacher. This year, we focused a lot on program implementation, but we know the value that comes when a regular classroom teacher and an intervention teacher collaborate on what each individual student needs. So that will be a continued focus. It will also be beneficial with the universal screener because there will be consistent data located that can be pulled and discussed to meet the needs of the students. We'll increase alignment between curriculum and intervention support. As you know, we're going through a major curriculum rewrite and intervention is addressed in our new curriculum. And so there will be alignment in the curriculum to the LLI system and to what students struggling need. We will adapt intervention model to include the universal screener and this will allow for consistent reading data sooner. And like we stated earlier, it will be, it will help with starting the support earlier for the students. And then we'll continue to refine professional development based on the needs of the literacy intervention teachers. We're going to have a couple, some new ones and then we will have continuing literacy intervention teachers. So we want to make sure that we refine the professional development based on their needs. At this time, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Durham and Mr. O'Toro. We appreciate you guys being here and presenting that to us. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you for that. Nice, short, sweet, to the point. Do have a couple of questions. When you, how does this, how does this affect just a regular classroom teacher? I mean, when I saw things about planning periods or planning time, is that what the classroom teachers were or the LTI teachers?
That is for the level literacy intervention teacher. The literacy intervention teacher, they have to plan each lesson because they have five different grade levels. And so that was something that we'll be working and continue to work on with the level literacy intervention teachers.
Okay. And how many of those teachers do we have on each campus?
One level literacy intervention teacher per campus. And if it's a bilingual campus, we have one bilingual. So they will have two bilingual campuses.
Okay. And then when you talked about on your chart here on page eight, how were, how were those growth, how was that growth measured? I mean, what types of, I mean, obviously first grade, there probably were not written-type tests or...
So what kind of assessment is used to determine that?
How do you assess that?
Certainly. The intervention program provides teachers with two primary forms. The first is more commonly known as a running record or a reading record, as is called in the intervention. And it's a reading assessment that assesses the child's oral fluency. So the teacher has to listen to the child read a leveled passage. And then there's also a comprehension check. So the student is expected to answer not just literal questions but also questions about and beyond the text as well. Those are given every other day. So the teacher had, yeah, they are very, and it's very consistent, which is great because it is a fast-paced intervention. Growth is expected to take place rather rapidly. And so the teacher has that given to every child in the group every other day. So to be clear, by the end of the second week, that teacher would have two reading interventions for that student, be able to look at how they're progressing with fluency and how well they're understanding text at that level. But another high priority is really given to observational data, so what we call anecdotal records. The teachers are regularly observing the students and their interactions during the lesson. And there are written interactions in every lesson. It basically mimics a balanced literacy framework. So the teacher does have writing samples that they're recording observation about as well, as well as the conversations that students are having around texts.
No, is this the regular classroom teacher that you're talking about? Or again, this is all done in the pull-ups or...
Exactly. These are the expected assessment pieces or progress monitoring pieces in the 30-minute pull-out session.
Okay, so they get pulled out? These kids get pulled out every day?
So ideally, best practice for the intervention would dictate five times a week for a 30-minute period, K5. What really helped our more successful campuses this year was having a staggered intervention schedule as part of the master schedule so that all students were receiving intervention at that time and the impact to Tier One was minimized. So we're strongly advocating with our administrators that they all adopt this approach, especially given their feedback mentioned, ooh, scheduling was a little bit of a difficulty. We found that our principals who had the staggered half-hour intervention block in place for grade levels were able to minimize the impact of the kids missing Tier One.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice.
Thank you for the presentation. Is this program the one that replaced reading recovery?
It was added this school year, yes. We did away with reading recovery last school year and this was added in its place.
And so I'm wondering, I saw on your slides that we served nineteen hundred students this year. Do you know how many students we served the previous year with reading recovery?
Yes, actually, the most recent data that we had was from the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, and it was approximately eight hundred and sixty-five students were able to be served in reading recovery. It is a first grade intervention and we had at the time a hundred and eight teachers in Fort Bend, so about eight sixty-five.
Okay, so now it's almost, it's almost double. Well, it's more than double, nineteen hundred. And how many campuses do we have it at?
Every elementary.
All forty-seven elementary, and it will be at all fifty elementary next year.
Okay, that's, that's really good. Do we know what the cost per student was for reading recovery compared to this?
I don't have that data at this time.
Because I think the reason that we did that was to come up with a more cost-effective way to reach more children, so we.
Up with you on that.
And did I hear you say that reading recovery was just for first grade?
Yes, that is correct. It's a first grade intervention.
But this is K through five?
Actually, it is an intervention program that spans even through tenth grade, but we're implementing it K, K five currently.
Okay. Well, that is really awesome. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rice, for asking those questions because that's, that's very informative and it's nice to know we're reaching more students. One of the things that you mentioned about, since it's a new program, we had a lot of professional development to kind of kick everything off and then as it sounded as if through the school year. So could you, you might've said this, but I might've missed it, what the plan for professional development is for this coming year? Is that going to continue or are we?
Yes, absolutely.
Changing our plan or?
Sure. Well, we do have about seven new literacy intervention teachers coming on board, so a low turnover rate, that's always a good sign. And they will receive that direct Heinemann consultant training, you know, the actual official training in LLI for our newcomers are returning. Lit and bilingual teachers will receive still one full day of professional development training that is face-to-face. But with the implementation of Schoology, we're looking to go beyond just that month-to-month face-to-face meeting and really look to collaborate and to engage them in more of a differentiated learning path that has a job embedded emphasis. So that means we can network them in a better way to really be problem-solving together across their campuses, and that is exciting. We have a lot of experts in this role, you know? We do have former reading recovery teachers and a lot of literacy coaches, you know, they, they bring to the role a lot of expertise, but given the nature of this intervention, working with highest need students, there's always room to go deeper. So we hope that Schoology will also help us to differentiate that learning path for them.
That's really exciting, and I thought I also heard you mention that some of these literacy intervention teachers were coaching some classroom teachers and instructional strategies and things. So they're like a master teacher sort of at the campuses in a way.
Yes, and it is important also to let you know that they received coaching training as well, that our instructional coaching model was new this year in Fort Bend. And even our literacy intervention teachers also received that turnaround training and collaborating for the new school year with Melissa Hubbard, our Director of Teacher Development, to ensure that our lit teachers and instructional coaches can learn alongside of each other in the second year of that instructional coaching training as well.
That's excellent. So then my last comment, I know that it's really a question, but it at least is a comment and maybe you'd have a response to it. This program as it exists right now is impacting K through five students and, and it looked like there was a pretty good spread of kids from all the different grades receiving benefit. But then I also heard maybe that principals wanted more flexibility about how to use these teachers. And I guess my comment would be that, as you said in the very opening slide, reading at third grade level is a big predictor of how, how things are going to go in the future. And so I don't want to lose the emphasis on the K two, K three grades at the expense of trying to meet some kind of STAR testing standards. Because we want to educate these kids in the long run. We, we want to look at their whole experience and we kind of consider these STAR results, you know, a one-day, one-time test, and we don't want to label the kids with that kind of result. We really want to look at the whole child and their whole educational experience. So I guess I, I don't want to have too much flexibility and then lose that focus on the early intervention. So that would be my comment.
It's, it's well said because it would ultimately serve to be counterproductive, right? If we're not forming them in their early years to be successful, highly literate human beings, no amount of test prep will catch them up down the road, so it's good to hear you say that.
Exactly. And what if we get this to a point where we're doing so well in our interventions in the K two, K three years that we don't need those interventions in the four or five years? That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I agree. And one last piece is that what we've got now in our new curriculum is already going to help better support teachers to intervene in tier one. So hopefully, we don't really need intervention, right? Moving forward, ultimately, tier one is our best line of defense. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very good because that's exactly what I was thinking, is that if we're successful in K three, then in the four and five grades, eventually, hopefully, we won't need it. But I'm very glad that we're doing it now, very glad that we have a program that now reaches all of our children, K five, because there are children in our district who are not reading well, not reading on grade level in four and five, and then we're sending them to middle school to ultimately struggle in every grade, I mean, in every subject because they're not prepared. So I'm very glad for this. And thank you, thank you very much for bringing us this presentation and really for making efforts to expand this program for all of our kids. We appreciate that.
It's a privilege. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our second information item, it will be our term three student performance data update.
Yes, ma'am. Deanna Seyvedra was going to provide an update this evening. Deanna?
Yes, a very quick update. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Dupree. Honored to share with you some information associated with term three student data information. Wanted to bring you back to the primary focus of this year's development of the dashboard, and that was really for us to just develop a system and a way for us to continue to progress monitor students and look at indicators that would allow us to be more successful with our students and graduate them on time. We've made a lot of progress in the development of the dashboard, and you've had some time to interact with the dashboard because we started with a very static set of data reports and they've become more interactive. So you've had some time to kind of play with the data and look at the data. So really, today's presentation is going to be at a very high level. I'll share with you the consistent trend that we continue to see when we look at the data is that obviously our rates are much higher for our African-American students, our Hispanic students, and our economically disadvantaged students in the area of discipline incidences, rates of absenteeism, and achievement gaps. So as we've gone through the data at each progress report, we've seen that this continues to plague us as an organization. And so as we look at that trend, I'd like to really share with you this evening the things that we've used the data for to begin to fill those gaps as we plan forward for the school year to come. So as I think about the things that we're doing to really mitigate that achievement gap and address all of these areas, I'm going to begin with, starting with our, our teaching and learning systems. And obviously, you've heard this weekend as we presented at TASB and also as the staff just presented, that a big push for us in addressing this achievement gap is really the implementation and the rollout of the new curriculum. And if you'll notice up here on the slide, you see a number of icons that are going to, that are part of the curriculum that really provide teachers with very specific strategies associated with dealing with students who may have English language learning issues, students who may need additional modifications with their instruction, or students who may need enrichment. So our curriculum addresses all of those things very specifically as we move forward, and we're really excited about the rollout. In addition to that, we've got staff, we've looked at the data so that we could support campuses with additional staff associated to supporting the curriculum and the instructional delivery associated with the curriculum. So some things that we've scoped out by, again, using the data are the build-out of our instructional coaching model. So moving forward next year, we're going to be adding twenty-three instructional coaches to our title campuses. In addition to that, we do have some additional literacy intervention teachers. So for our Title I campuses, fourteen of the nineteen Title I campuses, we were able to add additional staff in the form of literacy intervention. And then we have four of our secondary campuses where we've added a literacy intervention teacher to address the learning needs of our students. We've also expanded the role of the math specialist by, for our non-title campuses, and we've moved that from a half unit to a full unit, again, in, in an effort to close the achievement gap with our students. And we shared with you a couple of months ago, the TACE plans for our edge campuses and all of the staffing associated with that. Again, this data was very purposeful in helping us to make those determinations. And then we've also added what we're calling campus-based stipend awards for our professional learning leads and also our technology integration champions. And those staff members on those campuses will also be working to help mitigate the achievement gap and work to strengthen our tier one instruction. All of these staff members will also be engaged in reviewing data on a regular basis, again, with the, with the intent to support tier one instruction because that is really our best line of defense and also to, to support the delivery of the, of the curriculum. Moving on to leadership systems and systems that are also important for us to be able to address some of the data and the trends that we see in the data are the development of a campus support team walkthrough system. And that is really, the, the, the primary intent of that is to develop partnerships with our campus staff and to develop teams of experts from the district office and work with principals to collaborate and help them leverage what they've written in their campus improvement plan so that we can help build capacity on their campuses. So we'll be making regular visits to campus with our campus support team walkthroughs. Targeted intervention support, as we begin to finalize our assessment philosophy and build out our assessment framework, the data that will be yielded from that system will allow us, again, to target our interventions and really make adjustments to the curriculum that may be necessary. And then really looking at leadership development with a focus on equity and access. And so our, our talent management department has really done a wonderful job of organizing a series of leadership sessions that are focused on equity and access with some of the topics being equity through institutional change with a professor from Harvard, erasing the opportunity gap, and then closing the trust or the achievement gap. And so we're really working to invest a lot of time and effort in building leaders that understand that decision-making with that equity lens is, is important to closing that achievement gap. We also know that as we look at this data, because there's a number of different data sets that we look at aside from the achievement, we're looking at discipline data, we're also looking at, as I said, the absentee data. So we need to, to develop systems that also help us maximize our student learning opportunities and support. So we'll be looking to really target the support with our social workers. Our Learning Support Services Division will be working, they're, they're currently reviewing the job role of the social workers and really targeting their support so that we can maximize their efforts on campuses. We've also developed a dropout prevention task force that's led by Dr. Sochi Rodriguez and Steve Shields. And we're looking at developing protocols and developing a comprehensive dropout prevention plan so that, again, we can increase attendance, graduate our students on time, and really engage them in the learning process, which will also lead to reduction in discipline issues. And then, of course, our positive behavior intervention supports. We want to continue to address behavior with positive supports rather than simply assigning consequences because we know that relationship building with students is very essential to the learning process. So we'll continue with our resort of discipline practices, our work with champs in the classroom, and then with specific feeder patterns, continuing, continuing with our capturing kids' hearts development. So as we look at next steps, some things that we need to do to continue to refine the use of the data dashboard, we do need to develop protocols for the use of the dashboard, not necessarily just by district administration and the Board, but also campus and our central office leaders more readily. We want to communicate the expectations on reviewing, having access to the data, and looking at it on a regular basis at all levels to make informed instructional decisions. We're also, we've worked, the, the curriculum division has worked very closely with our school leadership division and gotten some feedback from our principals on additional data sets that we may need to explore and add to the dashboard that would make the review of the data meaningful and customized so that they can make instructional decisions that are specific to their campuses. Some of the things that we've considered adding to the dashboard are possibly daily alerts regarding student attendance and teacher attendance because we know it's important for us, teacher attendance is just as important as student attendance. Grade distributions by teacher, with customizable watch lists, and then links to Schoology, Eduforia data, and campus improvement plans as all part of, just to name a few, as, as part of adding some more robust features to the, to the, to the system. And so really, that is the overview that I wanted to provide for you this evening, and I'll take any questions associated with that.
Thank you, Dr. Seyvedra. We appreciate that presentation. Do we have questions from the Board members? Ms. Heliger?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I appreciate that. This is very important information to see how we're going to be looking at the student data, data reports. You know, as you all know, this past week we had a chance to attend TASB conference and we gained a lot of insight into some information. So one of the things that you talked about was the, I think it was the behavioral and social and emotional systems. You talked about equity and access, was that during that one or was it leadership? I'm sorry, leadership, okay, good, yes. So leadership. I know you mentioned three, three of those classes that the leaders were going to have to take. Were they just those twenty-three people that you identified or was that going to be cross?
That'll be for all of our campus leaders. If you were, as a matter of fact, last week, we had Pedro Noguera come in and address all of our campus leaders. We had one session in the morning, and each one of the campus leaders also brought a team of teachers so that they could begin planning with, with that in mind. In addition to that, in the afternoon, we had another session with our central office leaders, and that's really so that we can build a foundation and an awareness of things that we need to keep in mind as we're making instructional decisions, policy decisions, and things that may affect our student performance.
So do we have certain goals when it comes to, you know, our achievement gaps and some of the, let me see. Really, the achievement gap is number one for me. And then we go into the discipline incidents and whatnot, but do we have some new goals for this year to, for this? Because I don't think our numbers have kind of stayed steady over the last year.
We do, we do see a lot of, well, right now, the data has just come in, so we'll be using that data as we develop our district improvement plan and also as we develop our campus improvement plans, and we'll be coming to the Board with specific performance objectives associated with that so that we can continue to see that level of growth. I mean, we are pretty stagnant. I do foresee that we should see some upticks, maybe not big upticks, but we should start seeing some upticks, especially with the development and the rollout of, of the curriculum. Because what we do see right now is there's not a lot of, the curriculum is not being accessed at this point regularly and consistently across the organization to develop lessons. And so as we roll the new curriculum out, we're going to see a natural uptick. And so, as we roll the new curriculum out, we're going to see a natural uptick simply because they have additional tools. But the performance objectives will be adopted by the board, and they'll be based on the most recent data that's recently coming in on our STAR performance.
I guess I do want to see, you know, and I can talk to you offline about this, but the description of these classes, I want to make sure that the classes that we're, our leaders are taking has a culture perspective in those classes to deal with the cultures that we're, you know, of our students. I mean, at graduation, I looked at 11 different high schools, I made eight of them, I think, right? And I looked at the different schools and the different cultures that are represented by each school. And I also looked at the scholarships and where they're going and what's happening. And if you noticed, there was a trend, right? Certain schools were based on the level of achievement for certain schools. They were going to certain types of schools, they were winning certain type of scholarships. And then you have certain schools where they had some achievement there, but then we had more military careers, which is perfectly fine, but it was definitely a difference in the school systems. And so, you know, this year, you know, with the dashboard, I know for me and my board members, we're going to be looking heavily into those numbers and seeing where we, we need to be, you know, this is great to win the ATB Board of the Year Award, but it'll be great for us to say that we have closed those gaps from year to year.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mrs. James.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Heliger, for those comments because that's, helping build our capacity and cultural awareness, I think, has come up before, and I think it's a valuable tool for our teachers to have awareness of the students that are coming to them in their classrooms. And I think having Pedro Noguera speak last week, it was really, really interesting. He was very inspirational, very motivational. I definitely enjoyed those presentations, and I think that was a great first step. But I think what Ms. Heliger is saying is about some specific cultures, and we need a little more help, and even the board maybe needs some help in that area. So, that's just a thought. I want to back up to teaching and learning. So, we're looking at the data dashboard, we're looking at our Term III data, we have grade bands, we have checkpoint data. So, around the teaching and learning piece, because I would maybe put the PMS data and things in a different, and discipline data in a different category. Do we feel like, do we feel good about or comfortable with the, those, this data and the assessments that are included here, or do we feel like there's still work to do on this? And what would be your thinking? So that, because we can only make good decisions about how to improve our teaching and learning if we have good data to make them on, and that's what I guess what I'm going for. How good is our data?
Well, we look at multiple pieces of data. We don't just look at one data set. And so, the dashboard is one of many data sets that we look at. I would say that right now with our assessment task force, they're really doing a deep dive and looking at and questioning things such as, we did an assessment audit, John Tanner came in, and we developed a matrix. So, we're looking at what are all of the different assessments that we currently give in our system, and what is the purpose of each one of those assessments? Do we need to continue to use the same ones? Do we need to adjust our framework because the data that certain assessments are yielding are no longer serving their purpose? So, those are the questions that we asked kind of when we fill the matrix. Then we also had John Tanner interview several of our principals to ask them, when you think about assessment and some of the assessments that we currently use, what impact do you think that that's making on your decisions? And so, we're bringing all of that back to the task force so that we can really, not necessarily just formulate our philosophy and what the intent is, because we need to have a system to gather evidence of student learning, but what will be, what kind of assessment design do we need to be looking at, and what are all of the different data points that we can use to make instructional decisions? And that, and I think that the other piece that we need to be mindful of is that we need to develop assessment literacy, and that will be part of the professional learning as part of the, you know, curriculum rollout. Because it is about the curriculum and understanding the standards, it's about the delivery, but it's also about what are the ways that we gather evidence and what, how can we develop that within teachers so that they understand that piece? So, yes, we're looking comprehensively at how good our data is now, but how we can make that evidence gathering much better.
I'd like, I'd like to extend that response just a little bit because I do think in the near future, we're going to have to actually engage the board in that conversation. Because even back to Ms. Heliger's question about the goals, I mean, the board's about to adopt new goals tonight. And so, really, that is going to be the basis of where we go for the future because right now, so much of what we're doing is based on, if we talk about achievement gaps based on STAR, I don't think that's what this board has in mind. So, we're going to have to engage with the board, that ties to what Deanna was speaking of, is what are the data we want to use to determine what gaps are going to, whether they're closing or not. Certainly, discipline and some of those things that are generated internally within our district that we can influence directly. But when you get to the academic pieces, that's the hard part because there's lots of things you can gather, and we're looking at a tool that'll help take a lot of the manual labor out of this that we may ask the board to help us invest in, that'll really make the dashboard truly interactive. And so, there's some good things that we're discussing because we believe we can, we can make it much more robust and much more meaningful. Because I think, you know, Deanna's done a great job, you know, I think with something she was given to work with, but I think we would all agree that looking at the grade bands and some of those things and the way you've been giving them this year, it's demonstrated we're on the right path, but it's not the most useful. And we want data that's useful to any user when they go into that dashboard. And so, but I think the bottom line is we're going to have to engage the board in the conversation about when we say achievement gaps, what are we, how are we going to measure that really outside of STAR?
Well, now, I'm going to jump in. I don't normally, just to expand on that, because I think this is a, this is a great conversation for us to be having right now because the next step, as the board president, what I've been thinking about as the next step, and the vision and planning team has sort of been part of this, is that team-building exercise where we talk about culture and we talk about, because the goal is to get to our own accountability system, like we've discussed many times. And so, in order for us to do that, the next step will be for the board to engage in that type of exercise where we talk about culture and what that's going to look like. And so, that's, that's on our horizon. So, this was excellent conversation for us to be having right now. Mrs. James.
Well, as the recently reappointed chair of the Vision and Planning Committee, thanks for letting me know. I'm glad I'm on the right track. Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Dupree, for your comments as well. And I guess one of the things, so I agree. I mean, we have to, the board definitely needs to look at it in the overarching way. And if we're talking about accountability system and assessment system that's useful. And I guess to pick up on something that the, that the literacy intervention group was talking about, let's see what's working and what's not, and then sort of eliminate, eliminate things and streamline what we're doing so it's, there's some consistency across the district. Because from, I know we're paying for a lot of different tools, and so, you know, maybe an area where we can have some efficiencies is to get that aligned a little bit better. So, I'm glad to hear you're doing a review, and I'll look forward to hearing what, you know, what you find out and what we can figure out are really best practices and what are the best tools for our teachers to have. I think we're going to be considering Policy EA Local tonight, and as part of that, it talks about an assessment system that is implemented in with fidelity. Those aren't the right words, but the concept is the same, basically, to make it an efficient and effective system. And so, I think you've captured that, I think you have that vision as well. But I, I just wanted to make sure we don't put too much weight maybe on this data or the data that I'm seeing on a data dashboard because it's not the whole picture necessarily. So, that was the clarification I'm looking for, and I'm going to look forward to that next conversation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Okay, let's move on. Before we go into closed session, let's go ahead and pull item 12D, which is the approval of revisions to board policy FFA, FFA Local and Student Welfare, Wellness, and Health Services. And then we'll move into closed session after that. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam President, I move to accept action item 12D as presented in the newly revised version at our places.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Well, I'd like, if you don't mind, Madam President, I'd like to handle this in a little non-traditional way. As the board may recall, this policy was on the agenda, then it was off the agenda, and then it was back on the agenda. And so, there's several aspects of this I wanted to acknowledge and recognize before we move, before you consider action. First of all, as Mrs. James mentioned, there is a new draft at your place this evening. And we did some work today, didn't change the content dramatically, but reordered it a little bit to make the plan development and the goal development addressed very clearly within the policy. The other thing I think that's important to acknowledge is that we have a SHAC committee that, SHAC stands for Student Health Advisory Committee, that's been working on this all the way back to December. And we have some members of that committee with us tonight. If you're a member of that committee, would you please stand up and be recognized? I wanted to acknowledge them because they have put a lot of effort into this policy. And we found ourselves in a position with this, and this is a very unique policy because it's required by law that the SHAC developed the policy in collaboration with the district. And then, of course, the board has to approve the policy. But we found ourselves in a unique position in that they worked really hard for several months to develop this policy, and it got to kind of the administration side, and I can just honestly say, I just think, I don't think we did our best in representing the district in this collaborative effort. Because we took the policy, we made some changes, and did not do a good job of communicating back to them our concerns. And I actually had a call with Namita Bijawa today, she's the chair of the committee. We had a great conversation, and I expressed my regrets to her and apologized that we did not do our best on this, and let her know that we're going to do, she's going to be chair again next year, and that we're going to do much better moving forward in our collaboration. And so, one way that I think a tangible commitment to that relationship is that I told her that what we're going to be, do as we move forward pending board approval, is that rather than staff just taking on this policy and then designing administrative regs, is that we would create a joint committee with members of the SHAC and staff, including principals, teachers, nurses, anyone who could be involved, developing a strong committee with SHAC members working alongside of us to develop the plan that's addressed in the policy and the administrative regulations. And she was very pleased to hear that, expressed very confidence and support in moving forward in that way. And I think personally, that will also help us ensure and assure that we, that those things are done in a timely manner and that we're able to begin executing the intent of this plan that our SHAC has worked so hard on. So, with that, I would turn it over to the board for consideration.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dupree. We appreciate you making those comments, and we definitely appreciate you making the efforts to reach out to the committee and to work with them more collaboratively going forward. And on behalf of the board, we'd like to also express our appreciation to the committee members for all of their hard work as well. And one of the reasons we wanted to pull it up in front of closed session is because we knew some of you guys were here, and we wanted to go ahead and discuss it now, and then you can go home to your families if you need to. So, okay, board discussion, I'm going, Mr. George, go ahead.
Yeah. Whatever I needed to or wanted to say, it's already been said, and I greatly, I served of that committee, and I greatly appreciate that. And also, I wanted to commend Ms. James to, you know, send that email and bring that to the attention of administration, and I'm so greatly appreciate what you said just now because sitting in that committee numerous hours, I realized they're some of the finest Fort Bend ISD volunteers. I have no doubt in saying that, some of the finest and well-qualified. And so, thank you for acknowledging that, and, I mean, Ms. President, thank you for acknowledging their hard work, and I just wanted to sincerely thank every one of you, and many of them are not here, and thank you for being here. And you heard that it's going to be a better future for us, so hopefully everything will work out, everything will work out, and I'm not going to be in that committee next, on that committee next year. But you have Ms. James, you know, she's a much able person than I am, I think. So, also, they can connect with administration in a better way, and so, we could, we could make sure our children's health are a priority in Fort Bend ISD. And thank you for all you did, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Do we have additional discussion by the board? Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes. So, under marketing food and beverages to students, I know a couple of years ago, when some of the federal laws came out, there was, there were a lot of folks from some of the booster clubs that were complaining that they could no longer offer certain foods for sale, you know, during after-school activities. Is that basically still promoted in this paragraph?
Guidelines regarding the food and beverage laws per federal guidelines, and so, yes, this policy does adhere to those guidelines.
Okay, so, does this establish additional guidelines, or does it, it seems like it keeps referring back to federal-state laws?
Correct. It does not provide additional guidelines, it just keeps us within the parameters of the law regarding marketing.
Okay, so, if some of those, some of those, some of those laws that were previously passed in Washington start to go away, then this policy allows for those to be relaxed as well, correct?
I'm sorry?
She wants to say something.
Can we make sure her microphone is on, please, and please state your name?
My name's Rebecca.
It's not on.
Sorry for interjecting. I just wanted to assist these ladies. My name's Rebecca Fiegus, and I'm the dietitian in the child nutrition department. So, as Christie stated, we tried our best to keep the wording flexible so that we could adhere to the regulations, but we also did have, you know, as I mentioned, we have a very diverse SHAC committee. So, there are parents, community members, booster, club leaders that participated in the writing of this policy. And the way we worded things is, sort of provided them options that as a SHAC committee, we would provide them guidance to implement those healthier changes without being so strict as some of the concerns may have been in the past.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fiegus. Do we have additional discussion? Mrs. James.
Yes, I have a question in the section on physical activity, and I'm particularly looking at the part labeled number one in our new policy and for elementary-age students. And I noticed in the, in the original policy that came to us, it had delineated 30 minutes of daily, or 30 minutes of recess was described. This has kind of generalized that a little bit to be just that elementary campuses should provide unstructured recess on a daily basis. And I guess, I know this board has talked a number of times about not wanting to punish kids by taking away their recess or having them miss recess even for tutoring and makeup work because we know it affects their behavior and their ability to do schoolwork if they don't have some of that free time and kind of unstructured playtime. So, I guess I wonder what your comment would be on that, and I'm considering making an amendment to adding that 30 minutes back in. So, I'd like to hear your comment on that. amendment to adding that thirty minutes back in, so I'd like to hear your comment on that, on, on what, thirty minutes.
Per the Texas Education Code, one hundred thirty-five minutes of physical structured activity are required in grades K through fifth grade, and so, we did add that to the policy. On page four, number ten, we did say that the district shall not permit the denial of the required one hundred thirty-five minutes of physical activity, P, or physical education class and/or recess as punishment for inappropriate behavior and/or failure to complete excitement, assignments, except for severe consequences.
So where's that, where, where?
At page four, number ten.
Oh, number ten.
Four or five?
But there's a difference between the structured physical education and the unstructured free play of recess.
Let me interject on that, since I worked with Christie to write that today. I felt like, Mrs. James, the policy as previously written was, because they were having trouble helping me understand it completely, because you had originally, early when we spoke, the thirty minutes appears to be in conflict with the one thirty-five that was previously in there. And so, when I was clarifying it, I said, so, if we had a thirty-minute recess every day, would that count toward the one thirty-five? And the answer is, if it's unstructured play, it does not count toward the one thirty-five. So to expect a campus to do one hundred and thirty-five minutes, that has to be structured by law, and thirty minutes of unstructured is not feasible in an elementary school schedule. That would add up to one hundred and fifty minutes of unstructured play each week and one hundred and thirty-five minutes of, that's required to be structured. So the way this was written previously was, I, I felt like it was very confusing, because it says thirty minutes of daily physical activity through a combination of recess, structured physical activity, walking programs, and so, the three of those four on that bulleted list in the original are structured. And so, in writing it the way, the final draft is that we provided tonight, it clearly, we've tried to be very clear that one hundred and thirty-five minutes of structured physical activity is required, and then they shall, and students shall not be denied participation as punishment. And we also said, and this is kind of, to me, what we've done is we've strengthened, because we currently have some schools that are not doing recess every day. So our goal was to say, we shall provide unstructured recess on a daily basis in every environment. So what that means, if it's, is if a school can schedule a thirty-minute recess, there may be fifteen minutes of structured time, but the expectation that we would put in our regs is that there still will be some unstructured time, because we heard the board clearly express a concern that they expected students have some unstructured physical activity time as well, not everything being carefully structured.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that explanation. I guess I, I'm concerned that when we are talking about six and seven-year-old children, and, you know, or five through ten-year-old children, and we're telling them, we're gonna structure every minute of their day, I have some concern about that. And I also happen to know that sometimes these children go to their lunch where they're told to sit quietly and not talk with, under the guise of, well, we need them to finish their lunch, which I, I, I see, I, I understand that, we do need them to eat, but all of those things together, when they get stacked on one, on one another, I don't think are in the best interest of the students, and I don't think they provide the best chance for the student to be able to participate in the learning environment that we want them to do in, the rest of their day. With a thirty-minute lunch and a thirty-minute recess, I think, is that pretty much the structure we have on most campuses?
For most elementary campuses, yes, ma'am.
Most, yeah, elementary campuses, so we have thirty minutes of lunch and thirty minutes of recess, and then we have, you know, another, another six hours of, of instruction where, where this is supposed to be their break. I think that's, I, I don't know, I'd like to hear what some other people think. I feel like that giving campuses the freedom to, to stru, to structure the recess where kids have to wa, I've seen it happen, they're after, being told to walk silently in a circle for ten minutes or fifteen minutes. I just don't think that's a good practice. It doesn't positively encourage kids to exercise either, or to enjoy their playtime, so, I don't know.
I do, I think I need to respond to what you just said, because I am a hundred percent in agreement with you. And I think what you're going to see, especially with the adoption of this new policy, our wellness plan, and our collaborative development of the guidelines, we're gonna see a lot of those practices going away. And so, and I know your passion around this, and I can hear it in your voice as you're saying it, but I also think in developing policy, we have to be mindful, the board has to be mindful of constraints they're placing on campuses that have many, many things to consider. And so, I would just ask you to, I mean, we've tried to frame this in a way that clearly addresses the unstructured time, because I would say that in the example you've given of the thirty-minute lunch and thirty-minute recess at many of our schools, that re, thirty-minute recess, a good bit of it is structured right now. And, and our goal would be to give them as much unstructured time as possible, but even more significantly, I think, is to make sure the structured time is engaging, fun, and not punitive, or not walk in a circle silently for ten minutes.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion. So, I believe you say, so the policy says that elementary campuses shall provide unstructured recess on a daily basis, which means that they have to do it some amount of time. Ten says that the district shall not permit the denial of the required one hundred and thirty-five minutes of physical activity, physical education, or the recess time as a punishment for inappropriate behavior. I would recommend that we put the word unstructured in front of recess, because it maybe better identifies that by recess, we mean the unstructured portion of the recess, so that, that, that a child cannot be denied that unstructured recess portion. So, so that there's no confusion between perhaps some of the recess, the structured recess time and the unstructured recess time, and I think that might get us where we need to be, to ensure that the children have that unstructured recess time that's not being taken away. Mrs. James, does that, does that help clarify for you?
Well, yes, I think it gets us a step closer. And, Dr. Dupree, don't take this next statement as, well, just take it in the, in the right way. So, two years ago, when we approved, two years ago, when we approved this policy, we talked about recess being available for every child. We had a, I was on the SHAC at that time, we had a resolution about recess and, and how it was gonna be available to all of our elementary students. And we haven't, in two years, we have not done a good job in making sure that that happens. So I'm willing to give us another chance, because I'm apparently back on the SHAC, and I'm willing to, and I, and I agree that we need a wellness plan, I agree that we need a coordinated health plan, I agree, and I agree that recess is a very hot topic. So, I, I, I will, I, I guess I will agree to this change, or I will make an amendment in a minute to, to make that change. But to the administrators that are in here, I'd just like to also say, remember, when the kids get there to school half an hour early, they're required to sit quietly in the hallway and not speak. Before that, they're on a bus, maybe for half an hour, where they're also told by the bus driver not to speak or act out in any way. The same thing happens on the way home when they're lining up
That's right.
For their carpool, or for their, for their bus, or whatever it might be, or for their daycare. And the same thing happens on that bus when they get back on it. So, while we only may be asking for six instructional hours, we're certainly asking for eight hours of this child to sit still and behave and be quiet. And that is a lot to ask of a five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten-year-old. So, I just want to be very clear that I will go along with this, but I will not hesitate to ask for this to be put back on the agenda if we can't come to some reasonable implementation plan that allows children free play during their school day.
I wholeheartedly agree with that.
And I will second your attempt to do that.
All right. Then I will, would like to add the word unstructured in number ten. The district shall not permit the denial of the required one hundred and thirty-five minutes of physical activity, physical education class, and/or unstructured recess as punishment for inappropriate behavior and/or failure to complete assignments, et cetera.
May I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James to amend Item 12D, and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Just, just to note that it actually does say that in Statement One, it does use the word unstructured recess, so it would be consistent with
Yes.
What it's, what is already stated here, so. And, and I've just, to put my two cents in, I know I spoke about this years ago. And I know when I was, when I was a kid, especially in first and second grade, I think we had three recess periods. You know, one in the morning, then lunch, and then the afternoon, and I, I don't know, you let me know, but I think I turned out okay, I mean, you know.
I don't, I don't think we want to go there, Mr. Rosenthal. If there's no discussion
I gave you that.
You'd vote.
Well, I, I will say, I think we should, we can just look to the edge model we've implemented and found out, find out how free movement and movement during the learning process and has increased our kids' engagement in their school environment. And so, I, I think it's very clear, I think the research is very clear, and children need to play. And so, I think we, if we can't get that, I mean, I really just feel very strongly about that. So we'll go for.
Thank you. Please vote on the amendment. Motion passes. Going back to the original motion, we have no further discussion.
Actually, I have a question.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Not to, hmm, not to open up a, what do you call it, Pandora's box or whatever, but when we added all the new instructional minutes to our daily schedule due to, to meet the state requirements, I know there was some discussion about adding some of that time to either lunch slash recess. Did that go anywhere? I, I, I know there was something that, that, there was something negative, or there was, there was something about that that, for some reason, couldn't be accomplished, but I, I never really understood why. And is this something that we need to look back into again, and maybe this would, would help, because I think we all, that, I'm just looking here, and it seems like we all kind of are pretty strong, strongly agree with what Ms. James is saying, and, and I, I know I am, so.
So, no, when we added, when we went to the minutes, I think it was on this year's calendar, we only, in the end, we added fifteen minutes to the school day. Administration really felt we needed more time, because when you compare our number of instructional minutes of a day compared to many other districts, we're still short of what, and we needed to extend it our, our day. So that works to our advantage, but, so that time is not, we haven't used it at the elementary in particular for lunch and those kinds of things, we've used it for learning time on the core content, because we need, because we needed that time that we, that we're missing out on. At the secondary levels, they've done some advisories and done some things that are, they've, they've added on for tutorials and things for the students. With the elementary, the fifteen minutes has been used more to gain more opportunities for the math, you know, the core content interventions and tier-one instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. I think what we're saying is that we want our kids to move.
Yep.
And we want them to have free play.
We noted, I have clearly noted that.
And so, if we have to give up a few minutes on the core content, we think that it's gonna help student achievement if we do that.
Agreed.
Mr. Burdine.
I wanted to make a comment, too. Being a dad of a kindergartner, and spending some time in the classroom this year, I think this is just the perfect example of why it is that we need to be very purposeful with our curriculum, and, once again, how we involve our students. Because although I agree with you, Mrs. James, there are certain times of the day that, of course, and I'm not speaking against this, but that we need to let them be free to talk and conversate and do all these types of things. As far as safety is concerned, especially in the hallways, and before school and after school, and you often give those kids, as you know, an inch and they'll take a mile. And so, once again, we just need to be purposeful about our curriculum in the classroom and, and review some of those things as you had stated, so.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Motion passes. Thank you very much, we appreciate all the SHAC members being here, we appreciate you guys working so hard on this policy. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551, Chapter 551, and the sections listed in the agenda, and for purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all matter, subject or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.